Good evening. It is six thirty-two, and I am calling this committee of the whole meeting to order. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Sexton, Smith.
Here.
Store. Straub.
Yes.
Taylor.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Vanage Thirana.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Covert. Esri.
Here.
Farney.
Here.
Fortato. Greer.
Here.
Hannah Werfriedman.
Here.
Here.
Lockshin.
Here.
Michaels.
Present.
Owen.
Here.
Pugh.
Present.
Rodriguez. Rogers.
Present.
Carter.
Here. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Michaels?
Second.
Second lock. Any discussion regarding the agenda? If none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Can I get an approval for the minutes of May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting? So move, Jen Lottkin, second. Eric? Public participation. Oh, I'm sorry. Right. Is there any discussion regarding the agenda? Oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion regarding the minutes? Okay, seeing none. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public participation. I have Ms. Minnie Pearson with the NAACP.
Right there. Great. Right in my eyeballs. Okay. Good evening, County Board. I am Minnie Pearson. I'm here to speak to you tonight. I was at the last meeting. And out of concern and respect for each one of you and your time that you put in, I wanted to address you again. So you won't know that I'm just talking to hear myself talk. I'm not doing that. I'm here because there's a genuine concern from what I heard at the last meeting. It is a lack of disrespect. A lot of disrespect in this board. And we all have different opinions. And we don't all have to agree with everybody's opinion. We all have one. But at least we can be respectful while we're doing that. And to let you know that I have a legitimate reason, I'm going to let you know what the NAACP's mission statement is. The NAACP Champagne County Branch strives to serve the people of Champagne County. Our primary focus is to provide programs and services that promote and enhance civil and equal rights, political empowerment, educational excellence, economic development, and outreach. Health, youth, and Champagne County Branch strives to ensure equal access to all rights, privileges, and resources that contribute to the quality of life for the people it serves. The strength of our branch lies in its rich history of the organization and its membership. The Champagne County NAACP is committed to building an organization that is trusted, respected, considered, and effective resource for Champagne County community. The overall goal of this branch is to improve the quality of life for the people it serves. And that means, at one time, we would stay for the people of color. But this should go for all people, no matter what color you are. Everyone should be treated with dignity and respect. At no time, and I'm not preaching to the choir because I know that you all know this, but I'm gonna reiterate it anyway. Everybody deserves to be treated with dignity and respect. And especially by our elected officials. You put them in a seat to serve the mission of this board. And at no time is there, should there be disrespect. Getting in someone's face, yelling and screaming, and bullying. I just got through talking to a group of sixth graders about anti-bullying. Stop the bullying. We are teaching our children that. We're teaching our children to adhere to social justice and how to treat one another with dignity and respect. And we cannot expect them to do it if we don't do it. And as the NAACP, I owe you the sense to let you know that I will be watching. That is my responsibility as the NAACP. This is not a threat. This is a promise that I'm going to be involved to let you know that everybody in this room should be treated with dignity and respect. You do not, at any time, put your finger in someone's face, yell and scream at them, and give them ultimatums. Get out, turn your keys in, do this, do that. Because first of all, that is unacceptable. That is not the kind of behavior we want even in our county, our cities, and any and other places. As I have not told you, I serve on a number of boards in Champagne and Havana. And I work with the police of Champagne and Havana, the city of Champagne and Havana. And at no time in my service on these board seats have I ever encountered disrespect as a person of color. I am treated very well, and I give it because I get it. But what I heard and saw this last time caused me concerns. And that is unfair, seriously. I'm not your mother. I'm not anything to you. But I'm trying to tell you, as a person of color, it will not be tolerated. We have feelings just like you do. You wouldn't get in your, you wouldn't want someone to get in your wife's face or your daughter's face and give them ultimatums. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you, whether or not you a church person or not. It just makes the thing work. It makes everything go smoothly. So I feel really silly having to sit and talk with grownups when I talk to mostly children about these kinds of things. And we go out and you say that you are the county board. Is my time up? Or did I even press the click? I didn't do that. I'm not gonna keep you. But my thing is, is this. We should not be like this. As a county, we should not be like this. As a city, we should not be like this. As people, we should not be like this. No one in this room is as good as the next person. We all should be treated with dignity and respect at all times. Do we make mistakes? Yes, we do. Do you sometimes do things that you regret? If you do, apologize. That shows the character of you, who you really are. But if you don't want your husband or your wife or your daughter or your son or anybody being treated the way you have treated some people on this board, then you know you are doing something wrong. If you have to lie about it, then that's another way of being ashamed of what you're doing. So please stop. Please stop that. Rest my case right now. Sorry I didn't trust it a little bit. Thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Pearson. Is there any communication amongst the board? Dr. Store.
Thank you, Chair Carter. I have two communications. Okay. First communication is that, hooray, June tenth through sixteenth is observed as Daniel Ellsberg Week. Daniel Ellsberg was a noted economist and political activist who is recognized by several boards for his ethical decision-making. And notably, I did not know this, the Ellsberg Paradox. He advocated for nuclear disarmament. And a local resident called my attention to the fact that the Bulletin of the Atomic Scientists has placed its doomsday clock measurement of the current risk for nuclear war closer to the apocalyptic midnight than it ever has been before. If you want further elaboration on that, you can see me after the meeting. Mr. Ellsberg sadly passed away in June of last year. The second communication is the passage of Senate Bill twelve eighty-nine, I believe, enrolled the Safety and Aid for the Environment and the Carbon Capture Sequestration Act. And I've been in conversation with some county board members and far more colleagues than I care to talk, to list by name about this. Everybody is concerned about the impact of sequestering carbon dioxide beneath our aquifers. And the act is only a hundred and four pages long. I should have no trouble getting through it quickly. But no, it is, it's, there's a lot there. And our legislators have said that if they think that there's some problems or some oversights, that they're willing to talk about this and try to introduce amendments as needed. Does that cover it? Enough of it?
Well done, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Store. I would like to also add Juneteenth celebration in Douglas Park will be on this Saturday, twelve to three, Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, the oldest known celebration commemorating the abolishment of slavery in the United States. So if you are available on this coming up Saturday, we will be out at Douglas Park from twelve PM to three PM. Please join us. Vice Chair.
Just wanted to let everybody know that earlier this week, there was the rededication of Skelton Park that we contributed money towards. It was a great, great event. There were about eighty people in the community, only some of which included Chair Carter, myself, Mr. Pugh, and County Executive Summers. The space is vastly improved over what it was. The park isn't done yet. The Hall of Fame sculpture, the sculptures there, the Walk of Fame is not yet. And the benches are not yet there. But it's well worth going if you happen to be downtown to just pop over to Skelton Park. It's a beautiful space, and the community really seems to be embracing it.
Thank you, Vice Chair. It was a beautiful event. Any more communications? Excuse me. I'm sorry. My mind just went blank.
All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Couple communications. Number one, June sixth was the eightieth anniversary of D-Day. And there was a hundred and sixty Allied troops that landed at Normandy. About four thousand died that day. It's kind of an interesting ceremony. Actually, one of the veterans passed away on his travel to that event on June sixth. And then another one, that veteran was, he lied and joined the Army when he was fifteen years old and landed at Normandy. So now he's eighty-five. Thought that was quite impressive. The, I want to, just a little quote from the Queen, the King of England, not the Queen of England. "Our obligation to remember, our obligation is to remember them, what they stood for and what they achieved for us all can never diminish." Couple others. Flag Day is June fourteenth. And Flag Day is a holiday celebrated on the fourteenth. It's two hundred and forty-seven years old now. Seventeen seventy-seven was the first flag with the thirteen stars. And then Army's Birthday is June fourteenth. Army's gonna be two hundred and forty-nine years old. It is the strongest, most powerful army on the face of the earth. And then last, Father's Day. Father's Day is June sixteenth. It's celebrating the United States on the third Sunday of June, and it celebrates the contribution that fathers and father figures make for their child's lives. And thank you to the fathers. And then I also had a little note on June nineteenth. I looked it up. I thought it was very interesting in that it's a kind of an amalgamation of two words, June and the nineteenth, which I didn't know that. And that's when Major General Gordon Granger ordered the final enforcement of the Emancipation Proclamation in Texas at the end of the Civil War. Anyway, Juneteenth, and that's the end of my announcements. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jeff Wilson. We appreciate that. Any other board communications? All right. I'll turn it over to Ms. Leah Taylor, Justice and Social Services.
Thank you. All right, my people. We do have things tonight. First, we're gonna start off with our monthly reports, Probation and Court Services for April of twenty twenty-four. All of these reports are available on each department's webpage. Public Defender for May of twenty twenty-four. The Emergency Management Agency for May of twenty twenty-four. And the Veterans Assistance Commission for May of twenty twenty-four. Item B, we have the Rosecrans Reentry Reports. We have the Financial and the Program Report, both for April of twenty twenty-four. And now, we have our first of two pretty exciting things on our agenda tonight. We have the Advocates for Aging Care. They are doing a presentation on their skilled nursing home needs assessment.
Well, thank you all. Good evening. My name is Joan Dixon, and I am a member of the Advocates for Aging Care. There are several members of our group here. We seem to travel in packs. First, thank you for your financial support for the Community Needs Assessment, for listening to us over the last year, for listening to the stories of the older residents of Champagne County, and for sharing your stories with us. The issue of a critical shortage of nursing home beds in Champagne County affects all of us. So since we came together a little over a year ago, we've accomplished a lot. We have established the Advocates for Aging Care. We have been joined by over a hundred Champagne County residents as advocates. We've established the Community Collaborative, which includes Carl Health, Christie Clinic, OSF Healthcare, Champagne Urbana Public Health Department, three different colleges at the University of Illinois, Parkland College Health Professions, Champagne County Healthcare Consumers, the Community Foundation, and the United Way. With your support, we have engaged the Public Health Department to do the needs assessment. During the process, we have interacted with the assisted living, memory care, and skilled nursing facilities in our area. As you can see, we've tried to cover all the providers of service and the folks who will need those services. And now we're moving on to the next phase of the process and have, with the guidance of a national consultant, initiated the market survey to provide to developers and potential owner-operators. So what does the assessment tell us? In very general terms, it verifies that we have a critical deficit of skilled nursing and rehab beds right now and that the situation will only get worse. I found several very interesting facts that are shown on the infographic, and that's this little thing. We'll give you all a copy of it at the end, and we'll be going over it. But the interesting things to me were in the areas of demographic changes, insurance coverage, which is actually above the national average. For adults sixty-plus in Champagne County, it's at ninety-nine percent, which is remarkable. Nationally, it's at ninety-two point one. So that's a good thing. The number of beds that the state of Illinois indicates that we have a real need for more because we only have fifty-five percent of what we need, which is way less than the national average. So the bottom line is, even if we have the best facilities possible in Champagne County, we simply don't have enough beds. We don't have enough places to put people who need those services. So let me introduce you to Zahida Darvish and Robert Davies from the Champagne Urbana Public Health Department. And they performed and analyzed the needs assessment, and they'll be able to go even deeper into the story.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Zahada Darvash, and this is...
I'm Robert Davies, Director of Planning and Research at CUPHD.
And I'm the data analyst with the Champagne Urbana Public Health District. Today, we're gonna present the findings of the needs assessment that was conducted to be able to determine the needs of the sixty and older population in Champagne County. It's very important, before we go to the findings section, to be able to understand the context of this needs assessment. So in two thousand and twenty-three, University Rehabilitation Center of Champagne, Urbana was shut down. There was also downsizing of Clark Lindsay Village in Urbana, and all of these led to a significant shortage of nursing home beds in our county. This directly impacts the healthcare of the senior population in our community. Furthermore, it also leads to elevated healthcare costs and needs of this population. And so it became very imperative to conduct this needs assessment to be able to understand what were the needs and gaps, if any. Champagne, Urbana Public Health District was assigned the task to conduct this needs assessment. And we're gonna touch the biggest highlights of what our observations were, based on the surveys that were disseminated to the population. We adopted a three-pronged approach. The first one was to be able to understand the demographic landscape of Champagne County seniors, sixty and older. The second one was to be able to understand the prevailing landscape around long-term care supports and services in our county. And third was to be able to gather primary input from the priority population. So in our case, seniors, family caregivers, and the providers who are meeting the needs of this population. So just to give you some context, after Cook County with a million population, DuPage County with, sorry, Cook County with five million, DuPage with the million, Champagne County is the third most populous county of the hundred and two counties in Illinois. And this is the most recent American Community Survey data that we were able to extract data from. We looked at United States Decennial Census data from two thousand and twenty-twenty to be able to see what does this growth in population look like for our county. So for this timeframe, Champagne County has gained fifteen percent of its population. Likewise, Illinois has also gained individuals, but that is a much more slower rate. That is three percent. We also compared Champagne County's growth in population to the surrounding neighboring counties. Champagne County is one of the sixteen counties of the Health Service Area Four region. And of these sixteen counties, there were only four that experienced positive population growth. So Champagne County was at fifteen. We had McLean at fourteen, and Piatt and Moultrie at two percent. Rest all of the other neighboring counties experienced population decline. What this suggests is that Champagne County is growing at a faster rate than the state of Illinois and even its neighboring counties. So that's point number one. We also mapped the median age change during this timeframe. And as you can see from the second bar chart over there, Champagne County's median age has increased, and so has the state of Illinois's median age. And what this suggests us is that the population in both these geographies is aging. So when you look at the population pyramid, there's a shift in the distribution of ages towards the older ages. That means our population is also aging. We are gaining more senior individuals. We also mapped what does the growth look like for the sixty and older population specifically. And when you look at the third, you know, the infographic over there, it says the sixty and older age group has grown by sixty-seven percent during this timeframe. And we parsed this data out by males and females. Males have grown at a faster rate than females. So their growth rate was seventy-six percent compared to females that grew by sixty percent. All of this comes, you know, the purpose of saying all of this is, number one, our population is growing. It continues to grow with time. Our elderly individuals are also increasing at a faster rate. So outside of the sixty and older, the second fastest group that is gaining population or that is aging is the fifty and fifty-five. And so if you look at the age pyramid, at the very top, you see the elderly people, they are the ones who are experiencing the fastest growth. And so this kind of brings us to the point that we are, very soon, there is gonna be the need of the senior population. If we do not proactively cater to the needs of these individuals now, we don't wanna be in a situation wherein we are reacting... we don't want to be in a situation wherein we are reactive. We want to be proactive, right? So, we need to kind of take a look at their needs, the lack of infrastructure, the critical needs of this population. All right. The second part was, we talked about also the demographic insights, right? So, what does the 60 and older population in Champaign County look like? Currently, Champaign County's population is at 205,000 individuals, 18% of whom, so roughly 38,000 individuals, are these elderly individuals, 60 and older, 55% of whom are females, 45% are males. And then, when you see them broken down by race and ethnicity, predominantly, Champaign County's senior population is white at 85%, followed by individuals who identify as black at 8%, Asians at 5%, two or more races and other population categories at 1%. The median age is at 69.8%. And 80% of this population resides in owner-occupied housing units, 20% in renter-occupied housing units. About 12% of them identify as veterans, and 25% identify as a person with a disability. We mentioned this earlier, that 99% of our population has health insurance coverage. 1% does not. For individuals 65 and older, at least 94% have Medicare coverage alone or in combination with other insurance coverages. About 6.4% have Medicaid alone or in combination with other coverages, and then 5.6% have VA alone or in combination with other insurance coverages as well. So, this was just the demographic makeup of the population that we are trying to get more information about, right? So, that's just the part one. The second one was to be able to understand the prevailing landscape about long-term care supports and services in our community. And we referred to Illinois Department of Public Health's Inventory of Healthcare Needs, of Healthcare Facilities and Needs Assessment Document from December of 2023. That's the most recent document that data is available for. So, currently, Champaign County comprises of four skilled nursing facilities, and you can see the table over there, that list with the names of those skilled nursing facilities. It's Acculate Healthcare of Savoy, Clark-Linsey in Urbana, Country Health in Gifford, and Alignai Heritage Rehab and Healthcare in Champaign. These four facilities amount to 411 licensed nursing home beds. When you talk about capacity and utilization, three of the four have limited to no availability of any more skilled nursing beds. Furthermore, the document also identifies that by 2026, we would need 748 nursing home beds, which, when you consider the 411, reflects a 45% deficit today that we have. And again, that part which I mentioned about, right? The theory about being more proactive rather than reactive, right? The population is going to continue to age at a faster rate than the other age groups. We do not have the beds that are needed. And if we are not proactive about providing those, or at least looking into the infrastructure around them, this is going to be a reality for us very soon. There are 17 assisted living facilities as well that accommodate up to 784 units, and these comprise of Bridlebrook Villas of Hollybrook, Windsor Court, et cetera. The third prong was the, you know, to get the primary feedback from our priority population. And this was done in the form of two surveys. We called it the Provider Survey, that was targeted towards seniors, seniors with a disability, and family caregivers to these seniors. The other survey was the Provider Survey, that was administered to individuals that were directly in care of this population. Provider Survey was a much more targeted, niched population. The Consumer Survey was a larger population group that we were talking about. The sampling method that was used for these surveys was a non-probability convenience sampling, the purpose of which was, again, we wanted to focus on accessibility. We wanted to be able to maximize recruitment of this population, of the priority population, based on race, age, ethnicity, gender, geospatial distribution. The two surveys, we have the details of those. The Consumer Survey comprised of 22 questions with a completion time of less than 10 minutes. Provider Survey comprised of 12 questions with a completion time of under 5 minutes. And the sample size for us was meant to be 1% of the senior population. So, at 38,000 individuals, we were looking at under 400 responses. Our total responses were 939. Majority of those came in from the Consumer Survey. I mentioned that the Provider Survey was very niched, right? So, we were not able to get, there was only a selective group of people that we could administer these surveys to. The surveys were administered electronically, and there were surveys that were mailed out as well. For the Provider Survey, that was a very much targeted group of individuals that were able to kind of answer those questions for us. When you look at the demographic analysis of the Consumer Survey, so where N is equals to 881, we received 881 responses from those. 67% were seniors or seniors with a disability, and 33% were family caregivers. So, individuals were directly taking care of this population. 70% of the respondents came from ZIP Code 61822, 21, 61801, and 61802. Now, these are areas with high population density of the priority population. So, it's not that we were overpowering one ZIP code, and we had no control about that anyways, right? It's just that there are a large number of elderly individuals came from these ZIP codes, and hence, there was maximum representation from there. When you see that broken down by gender, 30% of our respondents were male, 70% were female. And then, when you see that from the race and ethnicity lens, about 91% of our respondents identified as white, 2% black, 1% Hispanic, and 1% two or more races. We also broke down the age group of our respondents, so the 60 and older respondents, into categories. We call them the young old, the middle old, and the old old. And these were from the age groups, 60 to 74, 75 to 84, yeah, 75 to 84, and 85 and above. And the reason we did that was we wanted to be able to see how many of our respondents are capable of living independently, how many of them needed assistance. And so, our theory is that the young old and the middle old are capable of pretty much living independently on their own with little to no assistance. The old old are the ones who need more assistance. But then, the majority of the responses came from that young and the middle old category, which also kind of throws light on the fact that, number one, maybe the healthcare needs of this population is not as grave as it could be. But then, considering that these populations are, again, in the next few years, going to probably move into another age bracket, that can change tremendously for us as well. So, we want to be mindful of that as well. About 52% of our respondents were married, 27% were widowed, and 12% were divorced. And we talk about marital status, because marital status is a key component in the health status, health utilization, and mortality in general as well, right? So, it was important to be able to see, again, you know, what is the background nature of these respondents that we're talking about. For the Provider Survey, again, these are individuals that were placing or admitting people in long-term care facility. Our N was 58, so again, a very small portion of the overall 939 that we were talking about. 43% of these providers were associated with admitting patients, and 57% with placing patients in long-term care facilities. And providers included representation from Carl, from Acculate, and these included doctors, nurses, case managers, social workers, administrators, et cetera. So, that was just the demographic analysis portion. Rob is going to talk more about the findings and the observations of these surveys, so I'm going to pass it on.
All right, so we'll start talking about health concerns reported by older adults in the Consumer Survey. So, but first, I'll reference another survey that we had looked at as part of this project. So, the Age-Friendly Champaign-Urbana Survey, conducted by another group here locally in 2017, found that almost 25% of their survey takers reported that they were not that they were not in either good or excellent health. So, wanting to explore this further, and after reviewing the data, we discovered several health concerns among older adults. Most notably, 311 older adults, or 35% of respondents, cited issues with mobility as a health concern. Among these, 57 people reported it as their only health concern, while most reported it in conjunction with other conditions. A considerable proportion of older adults, approximately 1 in 4, reported having vision or hearing impairments, which could lead to communication and mobility issues. Memory-related conditions were also reported as a health concern by 175 respondents, so approximately 20%, highlighting the importance of prioritizing cognitive health concerns among our older adult population. Most of the Consumer Survey participants, approximately 86%, as Zahada mentioned, reside in single-family homes, townhouses or apartments, so they live independently. Whereas, 14% of our older adults respondents report living in group living settings, like skilled nursing, assisted living, and other congregate residential arrangements within the last two years. Among them, 70%, so 87, individuals reported experiencing difficulties in securing such placements. The reasons for these challenges varied, with lack of facilities being the most cited issue by 80%, followed by service limitations at 38%, staffing shortages at facilities at 36%, and affordability at 33%. Approximately 76%, so 3 of 4 of the older adults self-reporting admittance to a long-term care facility, rehab, or skilled nursing facility had Medicare Advantage and/or Medicare only, while only 15% had Medicaid only. Mobility issues, memory-related concerns, and heart illness were the most commonly reported medical conditions among older adults and caregivers facing placement challenges. And providers that we had surveyed in the county identified several barriers that posed challenges to placing or admitting patients into long-term care rehab or skilled nursing facilities. The barriers most commonly reported by the providers were financial constraints for their patients, staffing shortages at the facilities, as well as transportation challenges experienced by their patients. So, we look, now we'll look at barriers to placement based on Provider Survey results. We had asked providers about logistical barriers that make patient placement difficult in facilities. They had noted that the financial constraints indicated by almost 70% of respondents, facility staffing shortages, and transportation challenges, sorry. They reported various contributing factors to the patient placement challenges. These factors include aggressive antisocial behavior at 81%, criminal history, and drug addiction, among others. Providers were asked to indicate the level of challenge associated with each of these specific contributing factors. They reported that criminal history presented the most challenge, and that was reported by 75, almost 75% of our providers, followed by high cost of medications, those with drug addiction, and aggressive antisocial behaviors. This suggests that the long-term care system might benefit from a multidisciplinary approach that integrates mental health and substance abuse services into long-term care planning. Both the Consumer and Provider Surveys included some identical components, so we could merge the data gathered from both sources to identify deficiencies in facilities and services catering to older adults in Champaign County, particularly in terms of long-term care services and supports. About 51% of our Consumer and Provider Survey respondents unanimously agreed that skilled nursing facilities remain the foremost service in Champaign County that is presently deficient or inadequate. Similarly, about half of our participants identified in-home care and support services as deficient, followed by nursing homes at 46%, and inpatient rehab facilities at 35%. A prevailing sentiment expressed throughout the survey was the desire of older adults to age with dignity and independence while simultaneously addressing their health and wellness needs. In both surveys, we asked participants to select the top three most critical future needs of older adults in our community. Half of the respondents indicated that housing was the most important. With, as Zahada mentioned, with a growing aging population, the demand for housing that is both affordable and adaptable to the changing needs of older adults is only expected to increase. Housing can be expensive for many older adults with either fixed or declining incomes. About 37% of respondents chose medication affordability as their second most critical future need for older adults in the community. Nonadherence to medication is responsible for nearly $100 billion in yearly excess healthcare costs due to hospitalizations. Costs related to nonadherence is prevalent in older adults, as many are living on fixed income and taking multiple medications. Despite being insured by Medicare, a recent study revealed that roughly 20% of older adults will skip or stretch their prescriptions due to high costs and out-of-pocket expenses of these drugs. And the third priority was transportation services as one of the most pressing future needs for older adults. The majority of older adults in our community continue to rely on driving as their main means of transportation. Nevertheless, as individuals age, they experience physical and cognitive declines that pose considerable challenges for themselves. Therefore, these findings emphasize an important need for older adults and healthcare providers to prioritize a transportation system that adequately caters to the mobility requirements and preferences of older adults in our community. And so, that, now I'll go ahead and wrap up. We have a long report here. We tried to do our best to condense it down into eight slides. I'd be happy to share that with you all, though. So, in summary, Champaign County's population is growing at a faster rate than Illinois as a whole, with a 14.6% population increase over the past two decades, surpassing Illinois's growth rate of 3%. The median age in Champaign County has risen from 28 to 30 years, reflecting changes in age group distributions and significant growth in the older adult population. Specifically, as Zahada mentioned, the 60 years in older age group saw a 67% increase between 2000 and 2020. With a growing aging population, there is currently, as you all know, a projected shortage of 337 nursing beds in the county. And just to reiterate, key service deficiencies identified by our older adults, their caregivers, and our providers include skilled nursing facilities, in-home care, and nursing homes. And looking ahead to the future, our community has highlighted the most critical needs for older adults as being housing, medication affordability, and transportation assistance. Thank you.
Are there any questions or discussion? Chair Carter?
Thank you. You had mentioned that criminal history may affect one being accepted in a nursing home care facility?
Yes, that is, that was a common barrier reported by our providers, or a challenge in finding placement for their patients.
And I just recently had a constituent reach out to me. Her brother was incarcerated for some years, and it was hard for her to find him a place. How do we combat that? I mean, what could we do to maybe help our elders with their criminal history? I mean, because it will come up maybe if they need to be placed in a nursing home facility? Is that something that you guys maybe are looking at? I seen you said it was a 75%, I guess, reason for not being placed? Is that something that's come up or not?
So, I think this is, again, more subjective to the skilled nursing facilities. They come with a bunch of these caveats, right? And in a utopian reality, you know, everybody would be accepted. But these are, again, stipulations that come with the skilled nursing facility. So, ideally, if we were to have a facility which bypasses those or has some remediation for that, that would work. But again, a lot of these problems, when we noticed, they were beyond the scope of the individual facility as well. You know, these were more systemic changes. And systemic changes do not get addressed by just building one facility or changing the norm. It's an overall holistic approach that has to be adopted. So, I can give you a very philosophical answer, but I do not know what's the logistical answer to that. That's the reality of what it is.
But that is standard practice, I guess, when one is accepted into a nursing home facility that they check?
They do have the background checks, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Likewise, even health coverage is a big component, right? So, if a person does not, then that can also lead to impediments and barriers and financial constraints, things of that sort. constraints, things of that sort. So a bunch of these criteria impact how a person gets placed. Likewise, it's a person's perception or preferences as well, right? If I did not prefer to be in a skilled nursing facility which has limited amenities, then I would expand my scope and look outside, right? So it's both ways.
Thank you.
And I would just like to follow up on sort of your question, which is sort of the, what do we, what do we do next? What do we do about not only the specific need that you've talked about, but what are we going to do now that we've got these results? And so, I'm Kathy Emanuel. I'm on the steering committee for Advocates for Aging Care, too.
Do you want to sit down, Kathy?
I don't know. Do I have to sit down?
Go ahead.
Okay. And I, I'll move brief. I just, so the Advocates for Aging Care were, we were not surprised by the results. I mean, that's why we came to you guys in the first place. I don't think anybody's surprised, but we were a little surprised at the intensity and the extent of the need. And so, you know, the next question is, so what are we going to do about this? And again, thanks to you all and the county board of health who recognized this is a significant health problem in our community. We were able to go out and do the RFP and hire some consultants, national consultants, somebody who really knows what they're doing, because I think we all agree, we are amateurs in the skilled nursing. We don't want to get into the skilled nursing, and we want somebody who knows what they're doing to come help us out in this. So they have been in, and they have done, done a market study. They're in the midst of doing that right now, as Public Health talked about. Not only did they do, did they talk with all of the assisted living facilities and take a look at that, but so has the consultants. So we're looking at assisted living, long-term care, senior housing, the whole gamut. And we expect a report from them by the end of July. I would be happy, I don't know that you would be, but I would be happy to come back and share the results of that and let you know, because what they'll say is, not is just is there a need? We know that. They're going to say, here's what we think the market can support in terms of independent living, independent senior housing, assisted living, memory care, and skilled nursing. And one of the things that we've learned is that there is not another new freestanding long-term care facility practically in the country at this point. They're only done in conjunction with other services because they are not financially feasible otherwise. So that's probably what they're going to be talking to us about, where they could come back and say, we don't see any market need, but obviously that would be wrong. And it's just a matter of what, what the market can support. Yes.
This might be a question for after those results come in, but like, what are, what are the next steps as a county? Like, how do we attract a nursing home provider who is reputable and not looking to fleece the residents of Champaign County and shut down a facility?
So I really appreciate that question. So one of the things we've done, this particular consultant, they only work with not-for-profit organizations. And they are nationwide consultant, and they work with, across the country, they work with not-for-profits. We, we know by industry trends that not-for-profits tend to, it doesn't mean you can't have a really great for-profit organization, but on, on the average, not-for-profits tend to provide a higher quality of care than for-profits. It just makes sense that you don't have to turn some of the revenue back into stockholders. So one of the things we're doing with this consultant is having them hopefully tell us who might be good owners or operators. And the second thing we're trying to do, and we've been back talking to you and others, we're going out trying to raise some money. We're going to a bunch, we submit a couple grants, we'll be back asking you guys for money and everybody else we can for money, because what we really think we need to do is provide a business plan, a full-scope business plan that is expected to cost anywhere from around $250,000 to $300,000. That's essentially a financial incentive to a good owner to say, okay, we've done the homework now, we can say to a good owner, here, there's a need, here's the price point that we think this market can support, and now you do the, here's some funds to help you do a financial feasibility and business plan so that you come to this market. And, and it isn't an easy step, but this time, we hope to work with this consultant. And he, they've sent us, you know, all their references, and so we've been looking at that. There's some really nice not-for-profit owners in the Chicago area, in Indianapolis. Honestly, there are some in Bloomington. And so what we need to do is go to one of those that has a fairly good reputation and say, what would you think? Here's, here's how good a market this could be for you if you'll come to Champaign or Banner. And here's what we can do financially to provide you some incentive to come here. But you're right, we, it's going to be, we're going to have to work at it, and it's one of the reasons we're hoping the community, we can't, I think Public Health did a great job of saying this, it's an urgent need for everybody to come together, because we, obviously the Advocates for Aging Care can't do it on our own, but we can do it with some help. Yes.
I guess one of the things that I'm most concerned about, as someone who works with folks, you know, on the very low end of socioeconomic status in our community, is that whatever happens as far as, as building capacity for beds includes the folks who are Medicaid insured. And is that something that you're going to write into this business plan? Is that, is that a big priority for your group? Because that's definitely a priority for me.
It is, so it is definitely a priority for us as well. Now, I, I just want to make, it is. So first of all, it's not, it's not the only priority, because as was just shown here, that's not the only population having trouble getting access to long-term care. So while I want to make sure the low-income are taken care of, I would like to take care of the middle and, and to some extent, the upper income to help support financially the rest of it. But be aware, there's a sort of a myth that there are not beds available for Medicaid patients in this community. And we met with the owner of Accolade, which is the largest nursing home in the community. They, they are, Steve might be able to help, majority, like 85% Medicaid. And they get paid more the higher they get, if they go over a certain threshold of Medicaid, because it's Medicaid's way of saying, okay, you're a big Medicaid provider, you're going to need a little bit more money. So they want to maintain that high threshold. That doesn't mean we don't want to make sure we can take Medicaid patients, too, but it is not as if the people who are low-income don't have any access in this community. They have the same limited access as everybody else, but it's not worse access than everybody else. But yes, that's one of the reasons we want, what, what we want is a not-for-profit owner so that we can find other sources of revenue for them, because the only way somebody is going to be able to be successful in this market is if they can get some other sources of revenue. I, you know, we'll, we'll talk to the healthcare providers, we'll be doing fundraising, we're going to be looking for other ways of helping support a not-for-profit. You can't do that with a for-profit, but we can with an after-profit, yes.
I know that you're talking to the university, and I just want to publicly call on the university to seriously consider this. It would be an amazing opportunity to have for various colleges, as you mentioned, I'm also thinking about the School of Social Work, to be involved and to truly live the outreach teaching and research missions that our university has, and to support the community. You know, obviously, we have a College of Medicine, we have Applied Health Sciences, we have social work. All of those could be not only financially supporting this, but really benefiting from having their students involved in research. So I just would strongly support that connection.
Well, we appreciate you publicly calling on that. I have to tell you, and I won't, that's one of the most exciting parts of this. So we've got the dean of the College of Engineering, the dean of the College of Medicine, and dean of the College of Applied Health Sciences. We haven't gotten to social work yet. And they're pretty excited about this, because they, what we, again, as if it's not-for-profit, we have a chance to do something really innovative. And we've got the dean of the College of Engineering, who has just said, okay, we've got to do what he calls, put together a project platform. So he's very enthusiastic about this. He, one of the things we've learned along the way from those departments in the university is they have trouble recruiting, especially international faculty, because that faculty wants to bring sometimes their parents with them. And they have found that the services are not available in this community for them. So we have some real opportunity, I think, the Department of Engineering would like to be involved in the, you know, the construction plans, how do we put in monitoring, and what, what can we do in terms of virtual nursing, and all kinds of things that I think you can't do in an older facility. If we can come up with, if, if, if we can come up with an owner-operator that could see the possibility here, I think we could create something that is not just run-of-the-mill, but really innovative, and would attract people from other communities.
I got one more question. Are all nursing home facilities at capacity right now?
You know, they're not all at capacity. I think, you-
Three of the four.
Yes.
Accolade has some, you know, room to accommodate individuals, but then the other three, they are, have, they have limited to nowhere.
So three of the four are at capacity. And even the fourth is, it has some capacity, but, but not always, and not always for the type of patient that needs to be served. So sometimes what happens, it's not only that those people, it's also the high, high medical. So if you, if you leave the hospital and you're a cancer patient and you're on chemotherapy, there are limited places that will take you in long-term care in this community, because those are high-cost drugs. They don't get reimbursed for those drugs. They, they're providing the care, but they don't get reimbursed at the level of the cost of those drugs. So in many cases, they won't take you, and sometimes they don't have the staff and equipment to do it, too. So there are, there are things like that that we need to be focused on, and so even though a facility may have capacity, they may not have capacity for the kinds of patients that need to be served there.
Thank you. Jeff Wilson?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I just had a couple of questions. One is related to the numbers, and then on your last bullet there, top priorities. So on the numbers, 18% are 60 and older? 18%? So that's about 38,000?
Yeah.
38,000? And then out of that 38,750 need care, which is about 2% of the...
That's right.
So is that typical, 2% of 60 and older across counties need skilled nursing care?
I mean, maybe you want to answer, but that's the question for our consultants, and that's part of what they'll come back with.
Okay.
Ma'am, if you're going to talk, we need you on the microphone for YouTube.
So the reality is not that every aging individual will have a long-term care skilled nursing facility in need, right? But then a good number, a good ballpark number will be that 2%, which is what the IDPH suggests should be available within a community as well.
And I'm looking forward to getting to the older, older class, and then, and then maybe even reach the ancient status, looking forward to that. So you said the population about 16% over 10 years, or two decades, I guess. So over the last couple of years, has that trend stayed pretty stable, both on population growth and also the need for beds? Is that still increasing at that rate?
Good question. Rob?
That comes out of the study later?
There's almost two differences, so I'll let you guys talk about the aging, but the need for beds is increasing and has in the last couple of years because of the closure of our facilities. So three of our, our biggest facility and two other facilities closed, so that need has only grown. So then as the population ages, and I-
Yeah, and you asked about the population increasing in the last two years? So that has been a positive for Champaign County all along, right? But if you notice, the rest of Illinois, even, even, you know, like Chicago and the metropolitan areas, they're losing people. And, and so our, our situation is unique, where in our county has gained people. And more so, however, with that, with that population, with the age group, it's shifting, you know, a lot of people are aging and going in that, in that age group, per se.
All right. Anecdotally, I would think, well, someday I'll go to Florida, who knows? So why, maybe not, I don't know. So is, what's the big draw for the aging population to come to Champaign? Any idea? Or is 20% typical?
I have a couple of opinions on that. I have opinions on everyone. But we, we don't have enough draw. University, the accessibility to general health care.
Okay.
Somewhat milder weather than Chicago area, certainly than Minnesota. If you lived in Minneapolis, you'd rather live here, right?
I don't even know where Minneapolis is.
There you go. They keep calling it a twin city, but it's not. So there are several, you know, it's a well-educated population, there's access to the university, it's micro-urban, there are lots of Big Ten sports that attract people, and they come to join their family members and their grandchildren.
Okay. Well, thanks. And then my last non-technical question. On the top priorities for future interventions? So is that housing, independent housing, skilled nursing housing, or nursing housing?
It's not clear from the survey. I mean, that's, that was the answer that was given, and it probably includes all of those categories.
Okay. All righty. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? Beth?
Thank you so much.
Have you guys reached out to the College of Nursing at the university?
Pardon?
Have you reached out to the College of Nursing?
We have, we've reached out to, you know, we haven't at the university. Now, we have at Parkland, because we're very anxious to, one of the big issues around long-term care is CNAs, of course. And, and we have talked with Parkland about nursing as well, because one of the, again, one of the things we're kind of excited about, I can't remember if I, is there's a model that we saw, one of our steering committee members in Chicago, where one of the not-for-profit nursing homes worked with migrants. And they did ESL classes, and they were content-focused on what you needed if you were going to be a CNA. So, yeah, it was really, and they had a very, that's not just something they've tried, they've tried it, and it was a huge success. Well, we think we have an opportunity to do that here. So that's one of the reasons, Parkland, we went to them and said, would you be part of our community collaborative? And they, they-
Jumped in.
-create a lot of CNAs every year, and as well as nurse, other levels of nursing. And so they're very interested in working with us and have joined the collaborative. But we haven't talked with the College of Nursing at the U of I. That's a good question. If you have a contact, you let us know.
Actually, yeah, I might be able to help you with that. Also, I was wondering, I, I think they fall under engineering, but you might want to see if you can get some buy-in from some of the folks in the aerosol and ventilation and filtration folks, because that is a huge issue in nursing homes now, is the spread of disease-
Yeah.
-among patients. And if you're building a new facility, you must do it right. And I, I know that there is a lot of research going on in that area right now, especially as far as disease control goes, and that might be a very big point of interest.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Yeah, we will talk. Thank you, thank you for your time, thank you for funding, thank you for your support.
Thank you all for coming and giving us this great presentation and a lot to talk about tonight. All right, let's move on. I haven't done an ordinance change, so do I just ask for a motion? Okay. We're looking at item 71. Can I get a motion to establish the ordinance for Champaign County animal control policies and procedures, ICJJ, IC GenLock? Is there any discussion? We have the state's attorney, and we have animal control, and we have Michelle Judd here. JJ, go for it.
I would love to hear a summary of these changes and how it's going to affect our constituents.
That's not the kind of question I wanted.
Oh.
You want Emu-related, right?
Yeah. Let's talk about the Emu. We should name him in the ordinance. Well, there's a memo. But basically, what happened was, we realized the ordinance needed some minor updating, and then I will totally take responsibility. I tried to start doing that, and it was so messy, I couldn't handle it. So that's how we ended up with the complete revision. The 98% of it is, is what it was before, just reorganized, cleaned up kind of situation. The significant parts, I think, are the addition of the guard dog registration and the language around forfeiture of animals pertaining to criminal cases, which is why the state's attorney is here, in case you have questions about those specific things. But those are situations that they've been seeing in the courts, that they wanted some additional language to help them address, and to help us to move animals out of the facility faster, particularly the animals that are caught up in court cases, which are our long-term residents, so.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Any other questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. What's the jurisdiction of the county with respect to village and city?
That's a great question. So the jurisdiction of the county is everything that is unincorporated. So that is by default where this ordinance applies. A lot of the, particularly the smaller towns and villages, have just adopted our ordinance, because it's already written and it's easier. Some of the larger municipalities, like Champaign-Urbana, have taken parts of it, or they've focused on areas that we don't talk about, like leash laws and stuff like that. We don't get into that level of detail. If what you're asking about is, how does it work when we provide animal control services for the other jurisdictions? What we're hoping to move towards is, we would be providing the services that enforce our ordinance. And if the entity wants to enforce their ordinance, they can use their municipal police to do that. But our animal control wardens will enforce our ordinance in their jurisdiction, if that's the contract they want to sign. Which is what motivated the, let's take a look at this and clean this up and make sure it's what we want it to be, before we go out and start having that conversation.
Yeah, I appreciate all the hard work you did to, to modify this. So then, that begs another question. So then, the enforcement discretion or application of the enforcement, then, is within the jurisdiction of the county, not a village or a...
No, it's with the municipality of where the incident occurred. And again, like Champaign-Urbana, Rantoul, which have their own attorneys and whatnot, have their own priorities on what they are really concerned about enforcing. So they have specific things, kind of depending on which one that is, that they, you know, every time, they want to enforce that kind of thing. So it's not so much like, the wardens would go out and, you know, investigate the situation, and then provide the documentation back to the municipality, and then the municipality would provide input on whether or not they want to move forward with that in a civil matter, or criminal matter, depending on what it is. It's, it's very gray, I think, is the answer to that one. And it's very much a relational conversation.
Thank you. Hi, Jerry, my name's Jamala. How are you? At the last meeting, we had, this doesn't have anything to do with the ordinance, but I'm just gonna say, opportunity since you're here, we had a lady come talk to us about her child being bitten by a dog. And her concern was that there was no record of the previous dog bite. I'm not saying that that's true, but can you kind of explain to the public what happens when a person is bitten by a dog, and how you guys handle that?
Yeah, we, we get a call for service. It may be directly to MetCat Dispatch, it may come from one of the medical clinics, may come from, directly from a complaint to our office. We go out and we investigate that bite. If it falls into enforcement, as far as with quarantines and also with running at large, no rabies vaccination, we, we determine where that quarantine should happen, and if any enforcement action should take place. Then, like Michelle had mentioned, we have different courts. We have, depending on the village or city that we contract with, so we enforce their, their ordinances to that point. If an animal's not vaccinated, it's typically done at our facility, the quarantine, or it can be done at a vet of the choosing of the owner. Then there are dangerous dog declarations that can happen, that can be done through the courts, and it can also be done administratively through animal control.
I think, in relation to what you're asking to, you know, I think it's not far off from policing, where there's a call that comes in, the warden goes out, there's nobody around, there's no dog around, like, there's no report, right? So it's, again, it's just, it's all interaction with people. So if there's not a commitment by whoever's making that call to follow through with the information that's needed, to do an investigation, to write a report, there's really nothing for the warden to report on, because there's, there's nothing out there happening, as far as what the warden is seeing by the time we get there. And I'm not saying that's what happened with that individual, but having seen a lot of the FOIA's that come through the animal control and whatnot, that it happens a lot, is, well, you called MetCat, but that's like, all you did, right? There was nothing to investigate, because there was no one there to answer any questions or help with anything, so.
And on another point, law enforcement may go out, it could be the sheriff's department or UPD, CPD, they may go out in the middle of the night and investigate things. And, and a lot of times, you do have to have that complainant and that evidence there to move forward with the investigation. So sometimes that doesn't always occur.
Jenny Lockson.
I don't know, this is just a question that came up for, for me after discussion we'd had at caucus earlier, so I hadn't had a chance to review it in, in reference to that. But is there language for seizure of animals that are prohibited under other county code that aren't necessarily dog, cat, or emu?
Our county code?
Yes, in this, in this policies and procedures, I guess.
So I think the first thing I'd say would be, our ordinance is diving into the minutia of what the state animal control ordinance authorizes us to do. So in terms of unauthorized animals, I would actually look towards the state law, as to what is the state saying you can and cannot have. And, and then, the animal control department could come in, come in under that authority and seize animals if needed. And I think, all the seizures that I've seen, and I don't know, seem to be more about people who are hoarding animals and not able to care for them. I don't, I can't think of an exotic cure...
No, not necessarily, and there could be, that could fall under the purview of DNR also, dependent...
Yeah, sorry, I was just thinking specifically about the ordinance we recently passed about roosters within a thousand feet of a home rule municipality. And if, say, someone within that thousand feet was refusing to give up their rooster, would we have then something in here where that would be?
That would be a zoning...
Yeah, so...
Not an animal control ordinance.
Maybe eventually, depending on how far the zoning complaint went through the process, but at that point, like, the law enforcement and the state's attorney would be involved, and like, the last step would be the decision, and then the animal control coming in.
Right, I just didn't know if that was something already covered in, in this, so I guess not. Thank you.
Ms. Michaels.
Real quick, maybe to clarify a little bit of this, I do remember in past that the former warden had picked up other animals that were not your typical cat-dog type thing. So I do know that we have done that in the past, so what initiated that, I, I don't know, but I, I do know that there were other creatures that were housed out here at animal control until they were taken care of. So there's gotta be something there for it.
Oh, no. And that's why we changed, it used to be dogs running at large, and that's why we changed it to animals running at large, because the animal control has been picking up chickens, pigs, goats, all kinds of stuff, which wasn't technically authorized by the ordinance, so we wanted to cover that, yeah. I mean, it's Urbana, there's all kinds of pets out there, so. I'm sorry, but it's true.
I have Ms. Lock, and then Ms. Carter.
Speaking to the animals at large, I see we've updated it to include other things, including the emu, who I hope stays free forever. But then going back to section 5.4 on page 31, the schedule of damages to be paid only reference animals destroyed by dogs. So let's say, an emu running at large destroys someone's chickens, or a cat destroys someone's chickens, or whatever. This, by this logic, it's still only dogs.
Right, because this is authorized by the State Animal Control Act...
Okay.
...that authorizes the county board to offer repayment for animals that are destroyed by a dog specifically.
Okay, so if another animal does it, would it, that would become like a civil matter for them to work out in the courts, or, or whatever?
Yeah, there, we have no jurisdiction...
Okay.
...to offer...
Thank you.
...repayment for that animal if the emu went on a rampage and took out some chickens, so.
Live-free emu.
Yeah. I think they're vegetarians, too. No? Uh-oh.
Insects.
Grats, lights, bugs.
I just had a quick question. I know a couple of months ago, we received an email where a constituent was kind of confused as to who was supposed to be contacted in the event of a dog bite. Where is there a line at where this is the, the animal control, or should we call the police? Just anyone that's listening to us, like, where would there be a determination of who we should contact in case of that emergency?
For a more immediate response, please not emergency, unless it is a 911-type call. That way, we can get a response from a warden more immediately, whereas if somebody chooses to call the office and leave a voicemail at the animal control, we may not get that until that next morning. Or if they email our public email address, we may not get that until that following day. So if it's emergent, and there is a dog bite, and there's a dog at large specifically, we want people to call MetCat Dispatch for that non-emergency number for a response.
And animal control has developed a pretty, has developed a good relationship with MetCat, and has developed a, kind of a triage system with them, of what we go out to after hours and what waits until the next day. So we really do want everyone to just direct all their calls to MetCat, so that we have, we can utilize that system that we've created.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the current motion on the floor? All right, seeing nothing, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on, we have other business. I don't have any other business. Does anybody else have other business? I don't see any. I do not have a chair's report, and designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda is 7D1. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're gonna turn this over to finance with JJ Farni.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have our budget amendments first. Budget Amendment BUA 2024/4/332, Fund 1080, General Corporate Department 030, Circuit Clerk, increased appropriations $21,359, increased revenue $21,359. Reason: appropriation of funds received through the Court Technology Modernization Program for the purchase of a ScanPro i9500 microfilm machine. Could I have a motion? Mr. Owen and Ms. Loschkin, any discussion? Mr. Store.
I, I see that the circuit clerk is here.
She is, if anyone has any questions.
She could be invited to speak to the...
Ms. McGrath, if you'd like to speak to it, you're welcome to, or if you'd like us to just pass this and move on, we're good with that, too.
Was that a question?
It, it was an open invitation.
I applied for a grant the third year in a row. I received it, and I'd like to spend the money.
So this is for the Court Technology Modernization Program, and you're buying a microfilm machine?
It's a scanner. It is a scanner.
Okay.
It has that word in it, I don't know why, that's an IT question. But since they helped us get this, I went, this sounds good to me.
So, so this is more for copying things onto microfilm via this scanner into something that's not...
It's to preserve our microfilm records, which are starting to deteriorate.
Gotcha, okay.
And the old machine is old.
Yes.
Maybe elderly.
Yeah. No, it has...
Old, old.
Is it old, old, or middle old? I'm just happy that I didn't even make young old, I'm like, whoo!
Just how old are those microfiche?
They go back into the early 1980s, actually, this, this, this microfilm. The 60s ones were replaced by, good memory, by what was done in the 1980s. But the last of these microfilm records were created in the early 90s, so about a 10-year span. The reader cannot be replaced. The ones in the Urbana library are so much better, I'm so jealous of them. But this will actually preserve the records in a better format, so that everybody who comes in can use them.
I will note that you may be able to recoup some of your costs by offering up the old machines for parts, if that's possible, because, as you said, they don't make replacement parts for those anymore. So people who have no other choice, like, I know the LDS has a lot of microfilm machines and libraries that don't have the budget for it, they may be interested in parting out the ones that are no longer serviceable.
We actually have explored that, and thus far, there hasn't been interest in our beautiful, old, elderly, ancient, however you classify this, machine. We'll have to ask the Public Health District what that means exactly. But that's always what we do. We have to offer through the county first, because that's what our purchasing policy says. But if there's no interest there, we can either offer it through auction, through the sheriff's department, which is the other thing in the purchasing policy, or we can ask for exception to purchasing policy to offer it in a more public way.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item, Budget Amendment BUA 2024/5/633, Fund 2075, Regional Planning Commission/Department 100 Regional Planning Commission, increased appropriations $600,000, increased revenue $600,000. Reason: appropriation of funds for redeploy Illinois program for youth ages 13 to 18 who are at high risk of incarceration. Moved by Ms. Michaels, seconded by Ms. Straub. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And our third budget amendment, Budget Amendment BUA 2024/6/16, Fund 2075, Regional Planning Commission, Department 100 Regional Planning Commission, increased appropriations $4 million, increased revenue $4 million. Reason: this is for internal tracking of indirect and fringe benefits on grant-funded operations. Could I have a motion, please? Ms. Coort and Mr. Thorssland, discussion? Representative from RPC is here to explain the beauty of accounting. Seeing none, all in favor? Well, okay, you do have something.
I, I'd enjoy to hear, you've waited for a while, I'd enjoy to hear this.
I'm going to detail about this.
Oh, please, we've got nothing but time.
So, yeah, really, historically, this is just a bookkeeping change alteration from what had been handled in the past. So the way the budget currently works for RPC, we, we have our, you know, administrative expenditures for HR, finance, like, our licensing, software, hardware, all of that stuff that you can't necessarily break out individually to all of the different grants, because there's about 150 different grants, contracts operating at any one time. So all those costs go into one pool as administrative overhead. And then, we have to go through an audit by a DCO currently, where they, they look at our rate, and we basically charge like an overhead rate to all these individual grants based on what our actual cost is. Now, the change that you're seeing in here is, we've historically always recorded the expenditures within administrative, and then we, when we receive the revenue, the revenue goes to that specific grant, or that department code for that, that funding source where we pulled in the indirect and fringe. So it's, it's really a matching principle. You've got the revenue being recorded over here, and expenditure being recorded within administrative. So this budget amendment basically allows us to record the expenditures directly to the grants individually, related to that, that overhead rate. And then, we're able to record the anticipated revenue collection related to each of those grants as well, back into the administrative side. And then what happened is, like I said, this isn't any additional funding we're getting, but what had happened is at the end of the year, this, this doubled recording of expense and revenue, it gets eliminated on the books during the county's typical audit. So you'll see like, I think like footnote, I don't know, it's usually like 11 or 12 in the, the financial statements where we basically do like a, an elimination of our, yeah, our doubled up revenue and expenses. So, yeah.
Further questions? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? That also carries. Next up, we have our Cover Crop ARPA update. And from the Farm Bureau, we have Bailey Conrady. Bailey, just hit that big button in the middle there.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see some of you, some of you I'm seeing again after last night's broadband task force meeting. So thanks for having me out to talk about the Cover Crop Initiative. I bring greetings from the Farm Bureau Board. They are all recovering after what was a very long, very arduous spring that has been stop, start, and everything in between. In fact, I talked to a board member today who was still trying to get some beans in the ground. So it has been something of a spring, that's for sure. I was asked tonight to provide a bit of an update on our Cover Crop Initiative. I've got a few slides prepared, mostly with numbers. I've tried to keep it fairly short. I know Mr. Store over there is primed with a few questions. So we'll get started with this. So to provide a little bit of background, I know there's several of you here who worked around on the board for the original cover crop discussion. Cover crops are crops that are planted in the late summer or fall that provide a winter soil cover. The original cover crop is winter wheat. I mean, when you really think about it, that, that is the original cover crop, but in central Illinois is winter wheat. Now traditionally though, what we think of as cover crops now generally aren't harvestable. They don't provide an income generating crop. Some farmers are able to graze livestock on cover crops to reduce hay needs, and that can help provide some source of an income there. You can also get manure fertilizer from that. Lots of species of cover crops, cereal rye, winter rye, radishes, barley, clover, triticale. If you name something that can overwinter, somebody's probably tried to plant it as a cover crop. And so some benefits of cover crops, it helps address non-point pollution from fields. It helps, they help prevent soil erosion. In short, they keep the soil where it belongs, which is in the field over the winter, when fields have traditionally been bare. It also helps filter water through the root systems. It can reduce nutrient runoff in that way. And it can also help reduce compaction, especially as you get into like turnips, radishes, stuff that can really help break some of those compaction layers in the soil. So the Farm Bureau came to the county board, so a couple, year or two ago now, asking for some money for a cover crop initiative from ARPA in the water quality area. And so the budget outline is in front of you, is what we negotiated with the county board. It was a $245,000 project to be spent in total in crop years 23, 24, 25. That comes out to about $78,333 to be spent on an annual basis as an incentive to farmers to use cover crops, to hopefully help jumpstart folks into doing this. Because there is a, an educational component and there's also a cost to do this, you know, it's not free, it's not, it's not even really cheap to be able to do this, to be able to get this into the field post-harvest in a timely manner, or to aerial apply it potentially while you still have corn or soybeans. And that's even more expensive when you start talking about that. Out of that $245,000, we had built in about $10,000 over the three years for education and administration costs. Everything from postcards to communications to, you name it, we've tried to do it, with preference being given to new cover crop acres, new cover crop adopters, and as it was written in the agreement, small farmers. We never really defined that, but I'll talk about that number here in just a little bit. So year one, we're two years into this, so I'm going to talk about year one first. Year one was crop year 22, 23. So these cover crops were planted in the fall of 2022, and then they would have been terminated in the spring of 2023 with our payments, incentive payments coming February-ish 2023 after we verified, did our random audits. So that year, we funded 2,112 new cover crop acres. That was 100% of the new acres that applied. We were very happy to be able to fund. We were not, we did not leave out any new acres that year. That was a total of 19 farmers. Of that 19, 58% of them farmed 500 acres or less. Aaron can tell you, asking a farmer the exact number of acres they farm is not something you do. Yeah, exactly. All of them or none of them is generally the two answers. So we asked for ranges to try and get to our small farmers. So we asked for 500 or less, 500 to 1,500, or more than 1,500 were our three ranges. 32% were in that 500 to 1,500, and 11% were over 1,500. This was a total of 31 different parcels. 10 were in the northern half of the county, 21 were in the southern half of the county. You can see that we had a lot of acres apply in year one, over 15,000, which is way more than we ever really expected to get. I mean, we got a ton of applications in year one. So we were unable to fund 13,000, a little over 13,000 acres, which is a first world problem to have. I mean, and that was really our first sign that this was something that people were very interested in. So I will say that if you remember the fall of 2022, we had some weather concerns that, that year. It got a little wet as we got late into the fall. So we did have some acres that weren't planted, and we ended up actually, of that 2,200, we had about 1,900 that actually went in the ground. Our per acre payment averaged $26.62. We had maxed out our incentive at $33. That was a number that came from farm docs on campus as to what it costs to put cover crops in the ground, what was the economic cost. So our per acre average was actually below that $33, which was interesting to see. And if someone really wants to dive into the numbers, we can talk about, you know, what's it cost to put radishes in the ground? Is it more efficient to airseed or aerial apply or drill or put on with your fertilizer? I didn't break that all down, but if anyone wants that data, happy to get it to you. So in year one, we paid 44,000, approximately $44,665.97. In year one, on the education side of that, we did a lot of information in our Farm Bureau communications channels, and we also worked with Clearview, Clearview Farm, sorry, and our friend Jim Goss, and now Sophie Horton for a demonstration plot on cover crops that they used for educational purposes, especially with FFA students, ag teachers, and then some students from Parkland College as well. So in year two, seeing as to how we were below our target dollar amount for year one, just based off the cost of things, we ended up funding this past year 2,892.2 new cover crop acres. And again, when you ask a farmer how many acres they farm, they won't tell you, but somehow they knew they were going to put .2 acres of cover crops in the ground. So again, we were able to fund 100% of all the new acres that applied, and we were able to fund every farmer under five, less, that should be less than 500 acres that applied. So we were able to fund all new acres and all small farmers. 20 farmers, 65% of them farmed 500 acres or less, 30% were in that 500 to 1,500 acre range. That means 95% were under 1,500 acres, which is, in central Illinois, is really hitting your smaller farmers. Acreage locations on these, 23% of those acres were in the northern half of the county, 76% were in the southern half of the county. You may notice that in both years, we had more acreage in the southern part of the county, which really isn't a surprise to me when I start looking at names, because there are some very early adopters of cover crops and some very progressive folks down south who have really driven cover crops in the county. And you also have, I mean, a little bit of soil differences as you go down south versus up north, especially as you get in the far northern part of the county. Not quite as easy to get those in or get those terminated in the spring is really the, the bigger issue. Now, in year two, we did have less acres apply. We had 7,413.5. And I will tell you that I don't think that is because there were less cover crop acres planted in the county. I think it's because people didn't get money the first year, so they just were like, God, I didn't get money the first year, I'm not going to get money the second year. Even though our application is a grand total of one page, they still didn't want to fill it out. So that's why I believe that we kind of saw a decrease there, is that some guys were like, well, I'm 2,500 acres. I mean, they don't have the money to, to get to me, you know, unless no one else applies. So I am still very proud that we were able to fund 100% of our new acres and fund all those small farmers. That, that was something that the, especially the county board was very much wanting us to do, and I was pleased that we were able to do that. So our per acre payment, I, I think if you look at the global economics, to no surprise, increased in year two in 2023, 2024 to $28.64. Everything was more expensive. So our total dollars paid ended up being $85,000, $85,147.2. Again, in year two, a lot of information coming out of our Farm Bureau communications channels for education. And we once again tried to work with Clearview, Clearview Farm for a demo plot, and I hate to say it, but it failed utterly. So we were planting these demo plots after their wheat in the spring so that we could actually look at them when it's not negative 20 in January and see something green. It, if you remember last year in June, it didn't rain. And so the lack of rainfall, combined with some weed pressure, led to our cover crops looking more like a nice weed field than anything else. So lesson learned there, but again, it's a lesson we can move forward with. So, so where do we stand and where are we going? So our total dollars paid out currently is $129,812.99. That is 52% of our total funding allotted. I dipped into some of our, our Farm Bureau funds to help pay for some of the acres we funded this year that we had guaranteed funding for. I wasn't going to back out on those people just because costs came in a little bit higher than expected. We funded a little over 5,000 acres in two years with a $25.94 per acre average payment. And I'll tell you that per acre average payment number may seem a little weird, but that's including those acres that didn't get planted that were zeros. So that's what brings that per acre average down. And I can say that we, over the two years, have funded 100% of the new cover crop acres that have applied, and we funded 100% of the small farmers that applied, which are two big wins, I think. I'll tell you, as we move forward, we are going to be making requests for our remaining ARPA funds from the county to go for the next crop year. And we are actually actively looking for funding mechanisms outside of the county to continue this program post-ARPA funding. So we have been in conversations with Illinois Soybean Association. They have a, a very good cover crop program. They're very progressive in terms of this. We've had some discussions with Precision Conservation Management, PCM. We've had some discussions with some folks on campus who have some USDA funding on if we can work with them. And we're having, also having some conversations with private entities that would like to be able to enhance their sustainability marketing cell and would potentially be interested in funneling money through us to farmers to be able to do that. One thing that's very unique about this program is that it's stackable. So this program was developed in that you can add this on to other programs. When you start looking at US, other USDA funding mechanisms, that can kind of become a problem. They don't want you to go out and get two different sources of funding from the USDA for the same acre, which I get. But that is what makes this program unique, and it's something we really don't want to lose if we don't have to. So I'll let you know if we can secure some funding. Like I said, we're, we're working on it. But it is something that has been very well received by the farmers in the county. Everyone asks if we're going to be able to keep doing it. They really like it. And so again, I say thank you for supporting it. Thank you for, for allowing us to do this. I will tell you that there's been a couple areas of the state that have shamelessly tried to steal this as well and go to their own county boards to be able to do the same thing, which is awesome to see as well. So again, I just say thank you. So with that, I will happily take any questions.
Jenny?
I'm curious what, and I don't know if you would have this data yet because it's only been the first two years, but are there farmers who maybe got funding the first year, didn't get it the, the next year, and still proceeded and like planted cover crops on their own? Like that's something that was new to them and they've continued, or?
So we did have some acres the second year that had been funded the first year that fell in that 15, over 500 acres range that they reapplied. And I know they put them in the ground because I talked to them. So we did have some folks that got into that second year and went ahead and kept doing it. Now, I could get you an exact number, but it, I know at least anecdotally, a few did.
Anecdotal's good for me in case.
Unless anybody else wants specifics, thank you.
Mr. Store? Thank you. I am just so really happy to hear this. Good on you guys for developing a successful program. And we know some of it because you said, it's being stolen. Hey, that, that's going to make you feel really good. And rightfully so, and I appreciate the, the cooperation of the Farm Bureau and the farmers. I, if, if there's something at least that I can do, and maybe I can kind of encourage the, the board to kind of do what we can to, to help, you know, because we talked about this and you said, you know, stack anything to kind of keep those doggone reports about dust in the, in the air and shutting down the interstate, that we know it's topsoil. And I, I'm, I'm just very, very glad Jenny stole my, my great question. Good on you. And I'll, wish you ever success in the, in the, in the coming crop year. And it sounds like we got some hot weather ahead of us, and I'm sorry that they got the beans in the ground just before a dry spirit. Thank you.
Well, it's been interesting, and I'll tell you, I don't like the reports of dust flying through the air either because my phone inevitably rings from someone from either WCIA or WA&amp;E, and I don't like answering those questions either. So it is something, and I will tell you that I do foresee a greater need and a greater implementation of cover crops as we move forward, and not just because of the dust issue, but in order to qualify for tax credits for sustainable aviation fuel, those acres have to be cover cropped and minimal tillage. Strip tillage is okay, but minimal tillage. And so places like One Earth Energy that really want the tax credits for their ethanol to be able to make sustainable aviation fuel are going to have to be sourcing from verified cover crop acres. And as we see that moving forward, I can certainly see a greater implementation of cover crops, especially in areas around ethanol plants that are looking to take advantage like One Earth.
Mr. Wilson?
Thanks, it's nice seeing you two nights in a row.
Jeff, I just can't get enough.
So exciting. So the, my question is more of an economic question. How does this translate in? What's the economic benefit for the farmer to use cover crops? Or educate me on?
There's not one. So the, the economic benefit really isn't seen until you're five to 10 years out. That is the point where you get past the initial kind of cost of implementation, A, and also get past, I mean, because a lot of times, a lot of these guys are also doing no-till. And it takes time for the ground to get to a point where you get past the no-till curve, you know? And Aaron's, I'm just laughing at me over here, I can tell a little bit. But it, there, there's honestly not much of an economic impact, and there's a lot of horror stories in the countryside of people who have suffered yield loss because of cover crops, because they couldn't get stuff. crops, because they couldn't get stuff terminated, they couldn't get it in on time. Or they got it terminated late and they had too much soil cover and stuff didn't get enough sun. There can be a lot of economic issues. There can be yield drag, especially the first three years of cover crop implementation. And so the economics really aren't there, which is why the incentive programs have really helped jumpstart some stuff because they kind of help cover that economic cost that farmers are facing for something that is a conservation effort.
One more follow-up then. So that's why it's only tailored to the small farmer, large farmer with maybe, I don't know, large farmer would not even slightly even think about doing this. Is that correct?
No, that's not, that's not. I mean, I would say regardless of operation size, farmers, and it, it really, you know, there's no one-size-fits-all cover crop for every acre. You know, some farmers have some fields that potentially could, you know, could do really well with cover crops, or some that don't. But it's more the economics of scale when it comes to small farmers versus big farmers, like everything else, you know? The big farmer may be able to spread the cost of that application over, of that renting that drill over more acres versus a small farmer if they're renting a drill to plant their cover crops. And so it's more of an economy of scale issue than it is a, an implementation issue.
Yeah, I was just going to kind of dovetail in, in with what I guess Bailey said with some of her comments. It's not all, you know, a bed of roses to do cover crops. One thing she mentioned, I was going to mention, was terminating it, killing it off in the spring. There can be issues. You, you know, get into a wet spring and you just don't have time to get it sprayed off. You, you would need to be putting crops in the ground, but you got to terminate your cover crop as well. And there's the cost associated with terminating it. I haven't heard, I don't know anybody personally, but you hear certain cover crops, at least on certain soils, if they're left to go too long, those roots can get down into your drainage tile and plug your drainage, drainage tile. So then you've got issues with drainage tile not working. So then your ground's wetter than it would normally be with the drainage tile working. So it's, it's, Bailey said, well, it's kind of not a one cover crop fit all. And it's not necessarily even, the farther north, it's been discussed, I think here before, the farther north you go in the country and stuff, it, it gets harder to do cover crops because you have less time to get them established with winter coming on, and then to even get them established, and then let alone less time to grow in the spring before you need to be out there. Because like people in Minnesota, they're out there putting corn in the ground when it's basically the ground's thawed out and letting the corn sit there and it'll germinate. Well, we wait around here generally until soil temperatures are 50 degrees. If they waited till 50 degrees, they'd be, they'd maybe still be waiting some years.
Yeah, I was going to say, it would be putting corn in.
Yeah, we have no time, they have, but then have no time to put corn in because it just wouldn't be feasible. So there's all those different aspects to it. Is it a bad thing? No. Is it a good thing? Yes, but yet there are times, there are the times, yeah, it can be a bad thing for any one specific, like, say, piece of ground or any one farmer. And so it, it isn't a one-size-fit-all. But all in all, yes, the goal is largely, you know, erosion and, you know, keeping the soil, the nutrients where it is. All in all, it's a good thing, but it's like most things in life, if not everything in life, there's pros and cons. That's, that's just what it, what it comes down to. Thanks.
I want to thank Aaron. We've had some discussions about cover crops, and I, I really appreciate what, just want to shout out thanks to Aaron for kind of educating this city fellow who, who thinks he's a country fellow sometimes, you know, on this. And that I, we really, I'm so, I'm so glad that you're, 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 you guys are doing such a good job, and we've got a cooperative board that's supporting this.
Anyone else have comments or questions for Bailey? Chair Carter.
I just want to say thank you. Your presentation was very informative, also with Aaron, because I'm new to this, I don't know nothing about cover crops, but I am glad that we made the investment, and I am very glad that you are getting accolades on the work that you're doing. So that's awesome. So keep up the great work.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And thank you again for the opportunity to come out tonight.
Thanks, Bailey. We appreciate it. The next item that we have is for information only. The county has received the GFOA budget award, and so a copy of that is in your packet. Executive Summers.
The memo is, is pretty complete, but I just do want to reiterate that this award does represent a really significant achievement. To receive the award, they had to satisfy national guidelines, and I want to take this opportunity to thank Tammy Ogden, Michelle Jet, and Sheila Jackman for their work in completing this budget. They did an excellent job. Thank you.
Any comments from board members? All right, moving on. The next item we have is resolution placing the question of approval of the special county retailer's occupation tax for public safety on the November 5, 2024 general election ballot. Mr. Thorson and Ms. Taylor, discussion. Michelle's going to come up to share information with us from county administration.
So I just wanted to talk briefly about the handout I left at your seat. There'd been numerous requests for what exactly are we going to spend the money on? So I just tried to compile the things that kept coming up repeatedly in conversation or known public safety expenses that I knew about, things like that. So this is purely a suggestion. It's, we can change it, we can add to it, we can subtract to it, but listening to all of our meetings, I went back and reviewed our special finance session and whatnot, and this is the stuff that just kept coming up over and over that people seem to be gravitating towards. So, but again, this is not like part of the budget at this point. This is all changeable, so.
And of course, anything that we do, should this end up on the ballot and be successful, will need to be done through the budget process. So we're the people that are going to decide the things that we spend on. So, so it's great to have an opportunity to, to add things to this list and talk about it. Jenny.
Just seeing laid out here, the, the items that cannot be paid from public safety sales tax, and knowing that if we are able to pass this, then we will be able to offset funds to accomplish these things, because these are things that are important to me. You know, the, the compression study showing that we need to pay our staff better, we need better access to health insurance, knowing that having additional funding will make this a possibility. It makes it very important to me that we get this passed or we get some other source of revenue.
Chris, and then Jeff.
At, at the last meeting, I, I talked about the desire expressed, you know, thought of by the, our circuit court and previous attempt and, and discussions with the state's attorney and, and, and others about trying to develop a mental health court, something that is going to be extraordinarily expensive, but a way of diverting our fellow citizens out of incarceration and perhaps improving the overall safety and harmony in our community. That's not on this list, and, and, and in a future time, we hope that it could be. But we, we won't be able to do that unless we have the discretionary funds to implement that. And mental and behavioral health are difficult. And, and so I, I will support this, and I ask my fellow county board members to look into their hearts and see if, if, if some of these can kind of fall into what they could support.
Can, can I speak to that?
Sure. And so, Chris, I just want to make sure, because I'm taking notes here as well. I'm hearing that we need to add mental health court and things surrounding it, and there are some pieces of it on this list, but we need to put more focus on it, onto this list, make it more of a priority.
Well, I, I, I think Michelle kind of said that, you know, kind of indicated that these are some of those things that, that we've had under a current discussion and, and have, you know, we haven't even really kind of got into mental health court yet.
Okay.
And.
And Michelle, if you want to chime in on it?
Yeah, so we're actually very close to starting mental health court. We just recently did the reapplication for the adult redeploy grant and adjusted what we were using the money for to support a dedicated attorney from the state's attorney's office and from the public defender's office, which were really our kind of biggest obstacles was that staffing piece. Really, the last thing we need is we need a full-time deputy if we want to do mental health court, which would be a big part of the staffing additions for the sheriff's office. So currently, we have a part-time deputy. If we can replace that part-time capacity for him with like, like, and that deputy does drug court and does actual investigations as well, so he, he does both. But we really need someone who can focus solely on drug and mental health court. But figuring that piece out is like the last thing to actually pulling the trigger on mental health court. So we're, we're pretty much there. The desire is there. The pieces are almost in place. We just have one, one missing resource that we need to figure out.
Jeff.
Thanks, John.
Are we voting on this tonight or is this a discussion piece?
Right now, there is a motion on the floor to, to vote on this. We do not have to do this at this month's meeting, but right now, the motion on the floor is to pass a resolution to put this on the November ballot.
Next question. The next question is, looking at these numbers here, Michelle, how does this look forecasted out to 2029 with respect to the fund balance margin? I thought one of our primary concerns was forecasted fund balance of 11% in year 2029. Now with an additional $3 million of non-PST expense and $4 million of, I guess, new PSTT Well, how does that cash flow out with respect to the fund balance? Are we still going to have a problem with maintaining the adequate fund balance in 2029 with this expenditure?
I don't believe so. I haven't asked Travis to do that calculation. We can work on that. It, part of the problem is we don't have an ASME number in place at this point. So it would be a very rough estimate as to what kind of expense we're looking at, because the ASME salary increase is also usually the non-bargaining salary increase, which so the majority of our, of our staff needs to still be negotiated. But I do think this addresses a significant portion of the known cost increases that we are concerned about, if, if that helps your question at all. But if you want numbers, we can work on that.
Yeah, it doesn't help my question, but thanks. Even if you just say the target is 3 million more, I don't understand why it was that difficult to cash flow this out, to see what the impact is on the fund balance in the out years. Because the fund balance or the calculation is an estimate anyway, based on a, a projected expenditure and revenue increase. So I don't understand, it should be that pretty straightforward, Travis, to do that, right?
Yeah, I could put that together. I can't do it, and I don't want to do it right here in my head, in front of everybody, but I can put that together pretty, fairly quickly and get that out to the board.
Thank you. And then I, I believe the City of Champaign is considering a tax increase at the same time, correct? And so now we have a City of Champaign tax increase, a county tax, tax increase. I'm curious what the aggregate impact would be on the community within Champaign County with back-to-back on top of tax increases, not to mention the impact of inflation on the county right now. So those are some of my concerns, right?
Is the city, is the city doing an increase or are they just maintaining the grocery tax? I think they're just maintaining the grocery tax, as the most recent legislation has allowed them to do at this point. I, I haven't.
Yeah, I think it's slightly different than that, but yeah, maybe so. I think it's really a different kind of tax, not necessarily grocery tax.
Right, but it might wash out then at the end, because the grocery tax from the state is going away. So if the city is just replacing that with another commodities tax of the same percentage, then we're not seeing an increase specifically. But again, I haven't paid super detail about their budget. You can only focus on one budget at a time, so.
Diane.
Just a couple of questions here. These numbers, if I'm reading them correctly, we just got them here tonight, then these are things that could be funded. Some of these things are being funded, I believe. To what extent, I don't know. And then my question is, how much more are you low estimating that we would receive in order to meet these amounts?
I think, are you asking the sales revenue has consistently been estimated between 6.5 and 7 million?
Okay. So my question is, is some of these things are being funded. Some of these things are at additional. So are these all additional to what we're already doing with the public safety sales tax? That's my, I'm confused, I guess.
Yes, these are all additions.
I mean, some of them are additions. So the sheriff's stuff is additions from his memo that he had circulated a while ago. The state's attorney and the public defender are additions. The juvenile delinquency prevention effort, we're already doing that. That's just maintaining the 5%. So that's.
You'll just pull that.
Just an increase of what we committed to. The jury pay was just, I think, whatever level you guys had talked about and decided at the last special finance committee meeting, 70,000 was, I think, the middle increase that you had wanted to do. So we, that's not the bulk of the jury pay, that's just a slight increase that you wanted to do.
So that's an increase in addition to what we're already paying?
Yes. But not out of public safety sales tax. So public safety sales tax, CARF, is something that we're paying, but not to that level.
What are we paying now? Or are you wanting to increase it by 850,000? Sorry.
That's okay. We're paying $1 million now.
Okay.
So, but again, that's a, that's a whole discussion. Do we want to put that money towards public safety CARF, or do we want to put it towards something else?
So then the bottom of all of this, if most of these are additions, is you see that with the potential of this, if it passes, that we could possibly gain 4 million?
So the market salary adjustments for staff, like, it's unlikely we're going to get through the ASME negotiation with no salary increase. So that's a known cost that's coming. It's unlikely we're going to get through the health insurance negotiations without an increase. So that's a known cost that's coming. So those would support those. The Veterans Assistance Commission is definitely a number that's a bit up in the air, so I rounded very high for that. Ideally, it won't be that, especially the first year that we're dealing with this. So, and again, we've got that weird, so I guess, yes, to your question, it is a $4 million increase to public safety. It is not a $3 million increase to everything. It is a $4 million increase to public safety. It is not a $3 million increase to everything else.
Right. But what I'm saying is you, the potential is that we would gain 4 million if the tax passes and then these would be the items. If we do not, or we do not gain that 4 million, and let's say it's 3 point something, then some of these things are going to have to be reconfigured during budget time to mesh it all out.
Yeah, we're going to be talking about this a lot through budget time to narrow these down. And I think probably for the budget, we would want to go the opposite way, which is estimated the more of the 6.5 mark to be on the safe side. But this was just to give you a scope of everything that we kept talking about.
And then if I can, I'm sorry, I'm taking a bunch of time here. The other part is that non-public safety sales tax items are $3 million approximately. And those are not being funded by it now. So somehow we have to come up with another three. So you, you're potentially thinking that we're needing 7 million from this public safety sales tax if all these things kind of fall into place? Because then you free up 3 million from something else that you're doing to pay the other.
Yeah, which won't be difficult. The sheriff's personnel alone is 3.7 million. So, you know, which is being funded by the general fund at this point.
Because these are all new initiatives, for the most part.
New or increases to existing initiatives.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair Carter?
The city council, I just wanted to read this to you. The city council is leaning towards increasing the home rule sales tax by 0.25%. The city home rules rate does not apply to purchases of groceries, purchases of medicine, and things along those lines. Hold on. General merchandise includes items like clothing, electronics, and paper products. So that does look like we will both have a sales tax going on at the same time or not?
So they don't have to put theirs on the ballot because they're home rule. They can just do it. And it would, I'm assuming it'll probably go into effect July 1 or this summer because their fiscal year is, is June to July or whatever. And again, also keep remembering they're about to lose the 1% grocery tax. So the, the cost of the grocery store for people in Champaign is going to decline.
Beth?
This says that the tax would go into effect when the grocery tax cut does, which would be January 1. So.
Leah?
I had a question about the actual resolution, how it's written. I thought that I had previously understood that we were on the ballot. It will list the exceptions. Is that not true?
I gave the civil attorney my nicest, nicest argument and he said, no. He did not think that it was a good idea, that this is what's in the statute for how to do it and that we should stick with that.
Thank you.
Brett?
Hey, how you doing? Literally got these numbers real before this and talked about this before trying to put on the ballot because that really determines why I'm going to vote tonight. So a few things real quick. I know we talked about it before, the market salary adjustments for staff. Is that just, you said, was that just for the ASME that's going to be coming up or is that just for everybody from the study?
It's for everyone.
Yeah, just want to make sure. Was that the, the impression part or was just that the actual, what we increase every year anyways or?
I'm thinking it'll be both.
Okay. The veterans assistance commission is on here. We're probably going to pass that tax, I believe. We'll put on the ballot next year. It'll probably pass. If it does, where's that money going possibly to?
I was not aware of any conversation to do the VAC levy. That's news to me.
Wasn't that a tax we're going to try to do next year? We're not going to do it this year to put on the ballot? What were we talking about then? No, the tax, there was going to be a tax for the veterans for next year?
The Veterans Assistance Commission can ask the board to specifically put a levy only for them on the ballot, which would not help our general budget because it would only address what we currently contribute to the VAC. So I, I was under the impression we had walked away from that consideration early on. So I had not done any further.
Well, not for this year. I thought we were talking about it for next year, possibly.
Again, I was, I was not aware of that.
No problem, no problem. I guess that's all you have right now. Thanks.
I just want to, it's getting late and I'm a little tired. I just want to reiterate. I understand I put this on your desk tonight, but this is conversations that we've been having for months. So I, I really do not feel like I've sprung something on everyone. And again, you do not have to vote on this tonight. We put it on the agenda so we could have this conversation. You could get your list of numbers. We, we can tweak things. We can get the forecast adjusted. Like, that's why everything is on here tonight.
Chair Carter?
I just want to make one last comment. After meeting with our public defender, I would like her to get the biggest piece of the pie if this public safety sales tax do pass. I think that she's doing an awesome job. I think that she is under, well, I know for sure that her office is understaffed. And that is really the only reason why I am considering the public safety sales tax, along with the Veterans Assistance Commission. Those are my two top, and also addressing the, the staff pay. Those are my three top concerns. So I would definitely like to see the public defender staffing additions. I would like to see her at 1 million because I think that she, she definitely deserves it. She had pointed out to me that she didn't want her staff getting burnt out because of the shortage. And if we are not able to pass this public safety sales tax, I think we should be able to see what other source of funding that her office should get or could get to help with her issues in her office. So I, I've been thinking about this. I really have. I have. And I, I think that if it does pass, that I would really, I would really like to support our public defender's office, our veterans, and also our staff here with their pay. Thank you.
Okay. I have Jennifer Straub next because we haven't heard from you yet. And then Dawn Owen after that. And then we'll go to Jennifer Locke. Then back to Leah.
I just want to say that I would really love for us to vote on this tonight. I'm not doing anything to, to force that because I think a robust discussion is important. But I would love for us to vote on this tonight. We've been talking about this for months and months and months. I think most of us are on the same page that we have lofty goals for this county. We love what we got, we've gotten to do in the last couple of years with ARPA. And we don't want to have everything kind of be decimated in, in, you know, the wake of, of all that funding leaving. We rever our public defender and, and want everyone to have equal access to the law, all of those things. This is not passing the sales tax. This is leaving it up to our constituents. And boy, if I were watching this and talking about all, and seeing us talk about all of the things that are on the table here, and I didn't get a vote, I would resent the heck out of that as a constituent. So I, that's what I have to say about it. I will be voting to place this on the, on the ballot.
Dawn?
Thank you. I don't want to rehash things I've said before. I do just want to remind people that, you know, my, my concern about a regressive tax, like a sales tax, is that it's harming our most vulnerable constituents here in Champaign County. I also want to agree with Board Chair Carter and a few others about the fact that the public defender's office needs much more support than is even on this sheet. And that brings me to my question, which is if, if we vote for this tonight, we are not necessarily voting for these numbers. Is that correct?
Yeah, I just want to also, let's just stop and be very, very clear. You are not voting for this. You are voting for the resolution. And this, don't get tired of this because we're going to talk about this so much through the budget process. Like, you are going to get tired of it. We're going to have to keep going over this. You're going to want to see it in the whole picture of all of the budget requests. Like, this is just, there was a request for a list of the things we kept talking about and the dollar figures potentially attached to them. So that's what this is. This is just a conversation mover along because we've already started the conversation. This is just to keep us going. So this is absolutely and by no means being put into any concrete form by tonight's vote.
Thank you. Yeah, I would not vote for this resolution if these numbers were tied to the resolution.
No, no.
Jennifer Locke?
My seatmate very eloquently said all of my points. So I'll just say I've supported this since we talked about it the first time last year. And I support putting this to the voters today and think that's all.
Leah?
Thank you, JJ. Dawn kind of already covered and Michelle already covered what I wanted to, first thing I wanted to say was just to remind people that a list is just a list. It's not in the resolution. This is exactly what Michelle said. Just, we're all in charge of the budget. That is like, most of our actual job on the board is to approve the budget and decide where we're going to bring this county tonally. You know, are we going to give more money to the public defender? That's up to us. And this is a tool to help us do that. And then the other thing was, this is a simple majority, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then my third and last thing is I am totally going to support this. I do recognize sales taxes are regressive. I do think though that we can do a lot of good with what we could get from this.
And I just remind everybody, this is just to send it to the full board. So Jenny, you had your hand up?
No.
No? Okay. Beth?
Can I just ask if we could, instead of saying 1/4%, if we could say 1/4 of 1%? Because I know a lot of people read real fast and they see 1/4 and they think 25%.
No, it's, it's written in the statute. It has to be.
It's written. It has to. You cannot spell out that it is 1/4 of 1%. And you can't add anything else like the numeric value afterwards.
No, I tried. I had the numeric in there to start with. So I'm going to look.
I will say quickly that, that's something that if this does pass, that we should make clear that to our constituents and make sure that they know that the numbers are explained. Like, we, we can handle that, but.
Yeah. And there's the additional statement that does the math for them, right? An additional 25 cents for every $100. So I, I get what you're saying. People do read fast. But within the parameters of what the statute says, I think we've made this as clear as we safely can without calling into question the integrity of the, the question on the ballot. So.
Brett?
Thanks. Because I've been talking to my constituents about this for the last, when did we bring this up? November, I believe. So I know we need the money, but all my constituents are saying they're against this. And they're actually the people that are going to hit, going to get hit the most with historic black district with pretty much all the trailer parks in the area. They're going to feel it the most. So, sorry. But thanks. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. The motion passes. Next up, we have the auditor's monthly report for April 2024. The reports are available on the auditor's webpage. The auditor is here if anyone has any questions regarding the auditor's monthly report.
Hey, John, I do real quick.
Mr. Auditor, would you like to join us up here?
It's really not the quarterly report, but it's reports in general. And thank you, George, for being here. I'm still not understanding why the last statutory mandated quarterly report was done in September 2017. I looked at that quarterly report. It's just only four pages. And now we're in 2024. I'm not understanding why a quarterly report is not published when it's required by statute. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. I noticed you, it's a little dangerous when you mention 2017. You exclude the tenure of your colleague, Mrs. Michaels. We, we probably did not perceive much of demand for it in the, if, that is the case. However, however, I did look at JJ's last quarterly report and I thought it was a nice summary that might be more easily digested by you. And I, I am aware that the monthly reports are lengthy and that they're a lot to take in when you attend board three times a month and get a skimpy per diem. So I will give you, I want you to regard my April 18 presentation documents as the first quarterly report of 2024. And I will happily grant you a second quarterly report, which of course cannot be done today, but after the close of June. And so therefore it will be available in July. Deal?
Oh, I'm not here to make deals, George. I thank you for that.
It's an expression.
But I'm just a stickler for statute. And I, I could read the, I'll just read the statute.
Knock yourself out, Jeff. There's many ways to interpret a statute, of course.
Well, it's actually not just for me, George. There's people that may want to be interested in knowing. I just want things to be done right. And for me, part of doing right, whether it's the treasurer, the auditor, executive, or a board member, is just do what we're asked to do. And those roles are articulated already by statute. And that's why I keep bringing it up because I'm still not seeing a quarterly report, although maybe it's there. I just, when I go to the auditor's website, the last one I found was the one by, done by Mr. Farney in September of 2017. And so years have gone by. People have ignored it. Your statement was maybe there's not a need for it, but the statute already defines the need.
It, it, it gives, no, it gives vague language about a quarterly report. And, and I will say, Jeff, that I firmly believe that when the statute was written, you did not get monthly reports. Okay? These, this is in the old days. You did not, these things were on the primitive dot matrix and they were available at the courthouse for manual observations. I don't think that the statute 1970, or whenever it was updated, anticipated technology. So I offered and you accepted, at least initially, that the monthly reports superseded and tripled my compliance with the quarterly reports. Now, I happen to appreciate constructive criticism or, or suggestions. And I thought that the format that was used by the previous, the pre-previous auditor was, was a nice one. So I'm going to try that out in July and, and you'll show that your appreciation by engaging with the numbers.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on, D1, the treasurer's monthly reports for February, March, and April 2024. Reports are available on the treasurer's webpage. And I did check, those have been updated.
So I have a quick comment on that one, too.
Sure.
So, and I beg your apologies for me talking so much. So I had, last year, a year ago, we had challenges with the tax disbursements being done in a timely fashion. And I talked about it ad nauseam and then read an issue that our Mohamed Seymour School had, and they were downgraded on their financial status by the state board of elections because of the disbursement was not made on time. However, this time I, I'm more on top of my game. And then I also, I looked at the disbursements for the first disbursement and first installment. So I also, although I publicly stated that there was a lack of performance with respect to the disbursements last year, I do want, and I actually wrote a letter to the treasurer to thank her for issuing the first installment of the disbursements on time, which for my district is about 18.5 million. So I wanted to also say publicly, thank you very much for the treasurer for issuing timely disbursements of the first installment of the taxes. Thank you.
Anyone else have comments on the treasurer's report? Anyone else have comments on the treasurer's report? Moving on to item number two, resolution authorizing the execution of a deed of conveyance of the county's interest on real estate, permanent parcel 14-03-35-184-006. We have Jennifer Straub and Jennifer Locke. Discussion. Mr. Smith.
Yeah, John, maybe you can help out real quick. I was trying to figure out the 2027. Where did all that get broken out into? I could account for $801 of the 1,027. Any idea where the other 226 might be?
So Mr. Smith is referencing in that item that the bid was for $1,027. This was sold at an auction. So items not listed in there are the original taxes that were due, which that would have to be taken care of. You would have additionally, you would have interest that is taken care of, and then other fees that are just making those taxes, which the original taxes on this property were between $43 and $45 a year. I think that's where the $195 probably comes from, not having those numbers in front of me exactly. I can't really guarantee it, but I'm pretty sure that's what it is.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. The circuit clerk is still here. We have two items from the circuit clerk's office. Item number one, renewal of intergovernmental agreement between the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services and the Champaign County Circuit Clerk, Mr. Esri and Ms. Taylor. Clerk McGrath, if you'd like to speak to this. Here.
There. Just briefly, in the old days, this contract was worth a lot more money. The state decided in about, oh, wait, four years ago, when I started, that they weren't going to be so generous in their reimbursement anymore. But it still were somewhere between $16,000 and $20,000 that we wouldn't otherwise receive. And frankly, it is a real service to the people that are receiving child support. Because if we were not assisting and pulling together the records and frankly leaning on the attorneys to get the stuff that we need for the accounts to be open and the monies to be paid, this wouldn't happen. So I am grateful that they are continuing the program, even though, of course, I wish they would be a wee bit more generous.
Any questions for the clerk? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. And then our second item from the circuit clerk's office is authorizing the county executive to execute a letter granting an extension of the circuit clerk's outside audits, moved by Mrs. Taylor, seconded by Chair Carter. Discussion. Susan, if you would like to explain this, your memo summed it up nicely.
Thank you so much. Just to pick up on something that Jeff said a little while ago, this was really something that we could have done in previous years. And before this, frankly, the Supreme Court didn't care. They knew we weren't going to get the audit done on time, and that's what they were used to. However, they need us to memorialize what's happening now because there's a new requirement that says we cannot complete our audit until the county's audit is completed. So I talked to the folks who are doing the outside audit. They are moving along very nicely with the county's audit, and that should be completed sometime in August. That's their estimation. And then we can finish ours, which we make it sometime in October. But the statute still says it's supposed to be done by June 30th, and we are not going to meet that deadline. And we never will. So every year now, I'll be coming to you, just like I did this year, to ask for permission for the county executive to execute this letter so that they know we're doing the best we can.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor.
Real quick question.
Mr. Wilson.
I misunderstood this from our caucus meeting. So then, I got a question, John. Permission to ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. I misunderstood this from our caucus discussion. So then, what I heard you say is you cannot issue your audit until the county audit is done?
That's right.
And that's a statute requirement?
It's a, one of those things that got changed with the new auditing requires that the budgeting office passed last year and then changed again this year. It's supposed to be better because the county's audit is done first, and all the numbers that we need to look at in our audit are actually done. And then we have something to compare what we are saying about my office compared to what the county audit says about my office. Just as another check and balance thing that they think is appropriate for our outside audit.
And when's our county audit going to be finished?
According to the outside auditors, they're saying it will be done sometime around the end of August, which is about typical. And then it will take another couple of months for them to finish up my audit, which would be in October.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Does anyone have anything for other business for finance? Seeing none, there is no chair's report. Items for the consent agenda, A1, 2, and 3, D2, E1, and 2. Madam Chair, back to you.
Thank you. Policy personnel and appointments, Dr. Store.
Thank you, Chair Carter. I'd like to, the first item is, says that it's pending legislation, which is a bit of a, kind of a mysterious sort of thing. But it is the strengthening the Medical Examiner and Coroner System Act. I'd like to ask Coroner Thunney if you'd please come in and talk to us a little about this important legislation.
Good evening. For those who don't know, Steve Thunney, Champaign County Coroner. You'll have to pardon me. I was up until 2:00 in the morning at the emergency room marking a case, and then was back at work early this morning. So I'm a little tired. So I'll try to make sense. So there are actually two pieces of legislation. There was a state legislative issue indemnifying pathologists. So there were two versions of that bill. The House bill dealt with pathologists and the state indemnifying them. The Senate bill dealt with the counties indemnifying them. Well, go figure, they put it on the counties. So that bill did pass. It's on the governor's desk. I shared that in email to all of you. I have no reason to believe that he won't sign it. He's not going to veto it. So it'll become law. It becomes law immediately. And I think that'll do great things for us, hopefully, to get a pathologist back in the area. The other piece of legislation is a federal initiative. It has not gone anywhere since I sent the email to you. It's still sitting in committee. I have no idea where it will go. I did contact all of our U.S. representatives, shared my thoughts with them on it. I got a reply back from one of them, which thanked me for my concern about healthcare issues. So not really sure where that happened. So, but anyway, so the federal legislation basically provides some money to get people to go into forensic pathology. It also, that would really help us, is it provides some funding for training for death investigators. So that's some stuff we could take advantage of. I, there's no dollars attached to it yet, so who knows? So that's where those pieces of legislation lie. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Comment. Steve, thank you for all you do for the county.
You're very welcome.
You're very much appreciated. And I've heard so much positive feedback of your engagement with the county and just a lot of great things you've done. And it's been a long day for you, so I'm not going to say anything other than that. Just thank you so much for serving the county and being here tonight to talk about this.
Thank you. At some point, I would like to come back, maybe next month, and give you a presentation on what we've done so far this year. I had that prepared for you tonight, but I'd rather put it in a PowerPoint so you can see the numbers and we could talk about it. As it's late, I really wouldn't want to do that tonight, anyway. So please invite me back next month or the month after, when you have some time. I'd love to talk to you about what we're doing.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for staying.
Sure.
And we don't have any action that we have to take on this. It's for information. Much obliged. The monthly HR report has been, was distributed, and I really like this new way that they kind of put this out. But we're still looking for court service officers and correctional officers. And I know that it, I keep jumping up and down about this, but these are very, very important positions. Also, we're looking for planner and zoning officer in the planning and zoning, and we've got vacancies in other departments as well. The, so please look this over, and if you can find qualified people, we'd sure like to ask them to work for the county. Moving on to item number.
Can I ask you one question real quick?
Yes.
So my understanding is the chief deputy auditor is no longer the chief deputy auditor, and, which I think, does that, I don't know if it affects the audit or not. Maybe it doesn't. But if the audit gets done later, I don't know. So I guess my question is, does the county executive or administration have a sense of urgency to find a new chief deputy auditor with the CPA qualifications? Or what's that process take?
I would think that'd be under the auspices of the county auditor to find a successor.
Okay.
And.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Ms. Locke?
I can just speak to, I put our county auditor in touch with the office that handles spousal, trailing spouses for the university.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
In hopes of finding someone qualified who may not have applied most recently for the chief deputy auditor when it came up most recently. Because he said that there may not have been acceptable to him candidates the last time. And I put him in touch with the university because it's the season when professors are moving to town and trailing spouses are coming to town. And he may find somebody with the credentials he's looking for. At this time, he's looking for somebody with at least three years' experience. So it's not a recent graduate issue. So in the meantime, the auditor assures us that he is going to absorb the duties himself and then work with Orion through the contract that's already in place.
Well, thank you, Jennifer, for stepping into the gap there. Thank you so much.
Ms. Michaels.
Just real quick on another note, there's only 13 of us, so only two more people can leave, or we won't have a quorum.
I was just raising my hand to say, my caucus is apparently leaving in droves. I'm very sorry. Yeah, like, we need to go really quickly.
Noted. I, next item is resolution honoring the memory of Champaign County Corrections Officer Jenny Ashley. So, Ms. Michaels, Ms. Taylor, I don't know if you've been, got the, all right, we're going to try to share it. Thank you. I'll read the, the resolution is short. Please bear with me. Whereas the members of the Champaign County Board were greatly saddened by the passing of Officer Jenny Ashley, and whereas Ms. Ashley was an exemplary public servant that served correctional officer almost one year in Champaign County, and for 13 years in Effingham County Sheriff's Office. And whereas Ms. Ashley was a dedicated officer that strived to change lives through her service. And whereas Champaign County Board shares the sorrow and loss with her daughters, Alex, Morgan, Madison, and the rest of her family and colleagues. Therefore, be it resolved by the Champaign County Board of Champ, the Champaign County Board of Champaign County honors the passing of Champaign County Correctional Officer Jenny Ashley, presented, adopted, and approved, recorded 20th of June. Discussion? Chief Executive, I mean, Executive Summers.
Just wanted to let the board know, the members that are still here, Ms. Ashley's family will be at next week's meeting. They will be present.
Thank you. And if we pass this, I would like it to be off the consent agenda and moved early in the agenda if we can, please. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion pass. Appointments and reappointments. Number 3A, resolution appointing Jonathan Schroeder to the Sedors Fire Protection District, an expired term ending April 30th, 2027. Motion by John Farni, second by Mike Smith. Discussion? Not seeing discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Resolution appointing Jonathan Schroder to the Two Mile Slough Drainage District, unexpired term ending August 31, 2026. Erin Esri and Carolyn Greer, second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Resolution appointing Anthony Nichols to the Mental Health Board, unexpired term ending December 31, 2024. Ms. Taylor and Erin Esri. Discussion to the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Resolution appointing Dr. Krista Jones to the County Board of Health, term Jan, July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. Motion by Jenny Lockson, second by John Farni. I was trying to get you, Mike. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Resolution appointing Dr. Kim Wallawick Fisher to the Developmental Disabilities Board, term July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. Motion by Carolyn Greer, second by Samantha Carter. Oh, wait a minute. I'm, I'll get you, Dawn, next time. Discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Motion appointing Mark Tolson to the Forest Preserve District, term July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2029. Mike Smith for the motion, Don Owens for second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Day of motion passes. Next will be an omnibus motion for items G through M. Resolution appointing Doug Steerwall to the Bailey Memorial Cemetery Association. Resolution appointing James Grady to the Cross Cemetery Association. Resolution appointing James Reestek to the Cross Cemetery Association. Resolution appointing Francis Lefenhagen to Locust Grove Cemetery Association. Resolution appointing Catherine Stacy to the Locust Grove Cemetery Association. Resolution appointing Tammy Fueiling Vogus to the Mount Olive Cemetery Association. Resolution appointing Paul Roth to the Mount Olive Cemetery Association. Terms all from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2030. Motion by Diane Michaels, second by Mike Smith. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. There's a vacant appointment, list of vacant appointment. There's a vacant appointment, list of vacant appointments online. The county clerk's monthly fees report is on page 99. Chair doesn't have a report, and items to be placed on the consent agenda are 3A through M. Chair Carter, we have no further business from this committee.
Thank you, Dr. Store. Is there any other business? All right, I call this meeting adjourned, and it is 9:18. Have a good evening.